Start back, um, and as a request, because there's some places have to go, people to see, I guess. Uh, start with animal care. With Ms. Owen.
So we give you a big clap already.
All right, on the expense report. Somewhere. I'll get to the page in one second. It's on page twenty-two on the expense report. Any questions on the variances in the budget overall for Whitney?
Okay, salaries, could you please tell us what's in there?
Um, that is increasing based on the number of new positions we have added. Uh, we will be transitioning over to the new building, the new facility, uh, hopefully then this year. And with that will come a need for three new positions, um, because it's a larger facility, uh, holds a larger volume of animals. Um, so we have to have more people to staff it.
So this salary represents an increase of three?
Yes.
Okay, the, how many total people in the staffing?
Oh, well, we had another position and we cut it in an attempt to lower the operational budget. I think that brings us to fourteen total.
Fourteen or thirteen?
I would have to do a running count, probably thirteen. So we've got two animal control officers currently, uh, me and assistant director, shelter manager. Um, and then we've got eight. So, yeah, it would be thirteen.
Thirteen totally, or thirteen?
Currently, it will increase to fifteen, because we have to add two more over what we currently have.
Okay, thirteen includes an increase of three.
Yes.
Fifteen is an increase in two.
Okay.
It would go from thirteen to fifteen.
Okay, uh, last year, the last two years, this is an increase of fifty-three percent over the two-year period. What do you think the final answer is? How much money to operate it?
Are you talking about salaries or?
Yeah, salaries, salaries. Salaries went from three hundred and forty-three thousand to five hundred and twenty-six thousand plus benefits.
Yes, sir, my department is one of the lowest, if not the lowest-paid department in the city, so.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm not just trying to get back, I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I'm just saying like, there's, there's not really a solution other than to fund what's requested, because that is the minimal number of staff that is required for the facility to function. Uh, we don't have a surplus.
Ms. Whitney, if, may I go?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, I want to start by saying, you just do an outstanding job. I've worked on things with you and I know sometimes we're not supposed to lead with our heart, but you lead with every bit of you. And I appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
And it's just unbelievable what you do. So speaking of salary, I know we did a salary study a few years back and got the results maybe a couple of years back. And it showed that your going rate, that's what the going rate for animal care center directors is. Um, if anybody, I'll just say deserves a bump in salary, it's you, so.
Thank you.
I just want to say that because if people look up at your salary and you are a department head and you run a facility and you're about to run a bigger facility. So just want council members to be aware of that and to see what you're earning.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask my question again. What, what is, we're right now at sixteen. That's fifty-three percent increase the last two years.
Mm-hmm.
And we've got to add more. How many more do we have to add for our projected usage of that facility? Are we need ten more, five more?
No, the sixteen that we are currently approved for, we would, will not need to raise that any. That, that includes the, the ones we're adding.
Okay, all right.
So, yes, no, as it stands right now, to move into the new facility and staff it immediately, sixteen should cover that.
So, so this.
Um, as the program expands in the future, we probably have to look at adding a couple of more. But right now sixteen's what we need.
So somewhere around five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually ran the numbers, yes.
All right, you have any questions for Whitney?
Yeah, tell me about the, uh, the, uh, computer services from eight hundred dollars to ten thousand.
So we currently do not have a software program for our department at all, um, but we are a public works department. So like whereas JPD and the fire department, they have, you know, emergency management software that tracks incoming calls, calls for service, things like that. We've never had anything like that. So my officers don't have any sort of database whatsoever to pull call history from. They don't have any way to keep track of incident reports or, um, any sort of, um, orders from the judge as far as like, uh, court outcomes, things like that. We don't have any sort of software to track any of that. And so that ten thousand dollars is for the implementation of a software program to track the more than three thousand calls for service they get every year.
How many calls you get every year?
A little over three thousand.
Hmm, and what about the motor vehicle expense from a thousand, fifteen hundred to ten thousand?
Um, we recently acquired a fifty-two-foot bus from the CO. Uh, we had the money left over from some of our capital expenses from last year that we ended up not using. And so we've acquired it and we need to retrofit it a little bit. Uh, we're going to use it as a public outreach and public service, um, kind of a hub. Because we have some lower-income areas in our city who are not able to easily access veterinary care. And so we're going to act as a mobile clinic and we have a couple of local vets that are willing to partner with us and go out into our lower-income areas to provide onsite care for animals.
Ms., uh.
Thank you.
Uh, on the, here at page twenty-two, the, the very first item, salaries.
Mm-hmm.
It's twenty-twenty-four, uh, thirty-three thousand and then twenty-five, thirty thousand. That's a, it looks like a decrease.
That's not something, Bobby, do you see that on our list?
Yes, I don't know what list you're looking at, because that's not.
Page twenty-two, top.
One of that, it's not that one that you're looking at, Whitney.
Yeah, I look at public service complex. So animal care center is going to be.
Oh, yeah, animal care.
Yeah, so you have the, the total is going to be at the bottom where it says animal, right there at the bottom, so that's.
I see that now, thank you.
It kind of throws you off.
Okay, okay.
Oh, sorry, I was real confused. I was like, I don't see those numbers.
Yeah, we see, it kind of throws you off, yeah.
The professional services. I know you have been working personally to try to get certified in certain areas to drop this. Could you update us what we're on that?
Um, so the DEA obviously is a federal organization and, uh, that's a very slow-turning wheel. And now that is not going to take the place of anything, um, professional service-wise, other than our euthanasia. So that will save us probably thirty thousand dollars a year, roughly, and that's without running numbers. Um, but that will save us roughly thirty thousand dollars a year. But the rest of the professional services are surgical costs that we do not have a way to replicate. The only solution to bring that to a lower amount would be if the council wanted to look at long-term hiring of vet full-time on staff at the shelter. Once we moved to the new facility, you could potentially lower costs that way. But then you also have to field the cost of outfitting, um, our facility as an actual medical and surgical suite as well, which is in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, always does another front cost.
In the building, it, that space is provided.
Yes, we do actually have space for a surgical suite, uh, but your, the machinery and, uh, and equipment that it would cost to outfit that as a surgical unit would be a, a pretty hefty capital expense at the beginning, but then long-term, you would save costs across the board.
There's two hundred thousand operating supplies versus zero the previous year.
So that is because of the implementation of the new Tyler Munus system that we've got. Uh, we did not have, uh, we had two separate line items in our previous system and it was, um, animal supplies and then operating supplies.
Okay.
And operating supplies, well, no, excuse me, it was animal supplies and then office supplies. And so office supplies and animal supplies were then, um, my brain just went blank. They were combined, excuse me, um, into one just operational expense line item. So that is the animal supply budget and the office supply budget from previous fiscal years have now been combined into one. So all of the operating supplies for the facility come out of one line item now, which is why.
So operating an animal, thirteen in ninety-four, hundred thousand, in FY twenty-three was a hundred thousand and we're budgeting two hundred thousand.
Yes, that's because you're, the numbers are not accurate, because not everything got put into the new Tyler Munus system, because during the transition, you're combining line items or whatever. So I think it was a little more than that this past year. Um, and then also you're talking about an increase in capacity. And so we have to provide more stuff for that, you know, higher number of cleaning supplies, higher number, higher amount of dog food, cat food. I mean, everything across the board, and then the cost of everything has gone up as well. So the bag of dog food I used to pay twenty-three dollars for and now pay thirty-five dollars for.
Which is interesting, brings up an interesting question. How much per day, per dog, do we spend to, to keep them?
That is going to completely depend upon the, the day that you ask, because sometimes we have fifty-eight dogs in residence.
Per dog, not, not, how much per dog, I had give you one dog, how much do we pay to feed that dog and all?
Like per day, or what's the total expenditure per animal that we put into them?
Per day.
I don't have the fogey study in.
You're talking about a ticked up dog, you're talking about a big dog?
Mm-hmm.
She gets donations and she also raises a lot of her own money.
Yeah, if you're, if you're looking at like the money we, we expend for my department versus the number of animals we house, then it is not cost-effective. You're looking at, you know, probably eighty-five or ninety dollars a dog. No, seven or eight hundred dollars per dog annually, if that's what you're looking at. But you're not paying for just the animals we house, you're paying for those animals not being on the street anymore. You're paying for our officers responding to three thousand calls a year for service that the citizens expect a response to. You're paying for, you know, the fact that the community comes to us and we've provided four thousand dollar, or four thousand spay and neuter surgeries for residents of our community in the last four years. And you're also not considering the fact that I personally have raised four hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in donations in the last two calendar years as well. So.
I, I was just asking a question of how much it costs to kick a dog today.
You're, you're correct. Per day, I don't know. Annually about eight hundred dollars per animal that we handle.
Okay.
All right, you have any questions?
It depends on what kind of breed too, Larry.
Compliment you on being the nonprofit organization of the year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Fire Department. Chief, uh, Frittle is out, his daughter's getting married and so, uh. Takes two to fill his seat. All right, fire is on.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
First of all, thank you for what you do.
Do you want to discuss the, uh, yeah, I hear some questions about the increase in some of the sub-departments, about the reorganization and why those increases are somewhere?
Okay, and again, uh, Chief Frittle wasn't able to make it today, his daughter is getting married, so, you know, there's that. Uh, we moved, uh, some, a few personnel around, uh, in our admin division, uh, our IT captain. We moved him from training to ed, to the administration. And, uh, in our fire prevention, we had a, we have a, had a subcategory of, uh, fire education. We eliminated those two, moved two positions over to fire prevention. So what's reflected is actually, uh, movement of personnel.
All right, any questions for us?
Just, do you have a total labor cost or salary cost? And how much that went up this year? Every whole department combined?
I do not.
So the thirty, Larry, can you get through?
Yeah, I'm finished.
So the nearly thirty-eight percent increase in salaries in administration, how many people does that include?
Uh, that's thirteen people, um.
How many new people?
Uh, new people, is that what you asked? Uh, I believe three.
Three.
And that's salaries and benefits.
And has removed from other sub-departments?
Yes, they removed from one department to, to another one, to just streamline.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I'd like to ask you all the same questions as the police department. If there are things that you feel that are of dire need, that you don't have or that was taken out of the budget?
A big thing and, and, uh, again, I'm articulating for, uh, Chief Frittle is, uh, the, the stipends. They're near and dear to him. Uh, when I started, uh, we were working on an EMR level, which is a step below EMT. And he's gotten, uh, a grant to get training to increase our, uh, skill level and level of service. So the stipends are, they've gone through the training, so the stipends are the compensation for all the training that they're doing and the accomplishments.
Those have not been taken out of the budget, those are still in the operating budget.
I agree with them.
All right, you have any questions for the fire department? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
We appreciate that, very, very much.
Let me ask you, the overtime salaries, uh, went up, uh, over a thousand percent. Tell me about that, explain that to me.
Well, um. Currently, we are operating with ten open positions. So, and some of those, um, positions require certain skill sets, certifications. So in order to satisfy the, the, the level of care, we have a lot of overtime. With certified, with certified people. Uh, certification levels, like paramedics, we'd like to have one, uh, have some in each district.
Chief, I think he's talking about specifically an admin.
An admin.
Yeah, that admin went up from three eighty-one to five thousand two hundred and eight.
Uh, we had, uh, we added a maintenance chief, uh, to address, uh, some deficiencies we had with maintaining our apparatus. Uh, we, chief, uh, was added as a M, EMS director. And, uh. So we, we added two positions and, and, uh, uh, IT captain also.
Okay, I'm, I'm still confused. This is overtime salaries.
Yeah, so these salaries, they were pulled from other sub-departments. So what they, what I think finance did is, based on those positions, what they got overtime for this year annualized, they moved that into that line item.
I, I would just offer, um, across the board, basically, short of a situation where, uh, an employee is consolidated into a new department from where they were the prior year. Outside of that situation, generally, the overtime that's in here for next year is our current year utilization. Uh, it's, it's really that, that simple on, on all, on, on all departments, so. You know, recognizing a particular staffing situation in a particular department with vacancies or whatever the situation may be, or just work volume that dictates a certain amount of overtime utilization. Generally, it's what it's been this year, uh, is replicated in next year's budget.
How do we approve, like you said, we have a new IT captain, where is that in the rank of things? Uh, is it, once you're a captain, you're equal with everybody else and here's an IT guy that's like a captain?
Uh, it's, it's an administrative position, captain's position, so.
And it was bef, what, before?
Uh, it was a position that did not exist before. So he, this, this particular individual moved from operations to, to administration. So he addresses all.
What kind of pay increase would it be involved with something like that?
Uh, whatever rank he was, along with his benefits, I am not sure. Uh, so whatever the difference between the rank he was in operations to what, what he is now.
Bobby, would you know what that was?
Uh, no, uh, but, you know, there's going, you know, when someone goes from whatever level firefighter they were in operation, if I understood your question, to a captain's position, that's a.
And he, and there's seven.
How much it is, I really don't know.
And there's seven, seven steps to firefighter, what, whatever rank he was. So it's several levels to whatever.
Firefighter captain is probably equivalent to a lieutenant, police department, is that right?
I'm sorry?
As far as rank structure?
The captain's phase around sixty-two thousand.
As far as, but you go from drivers like.
Driver's around forty-six.
Sorry, then you go to captain, maybe go driver, cap, to captain, so it's about a lieutenant.
Forty-six thousand is firefighter pay, uh, mid-fifties, I think, is driver's pay, give or take. And then captain's pay is sixty-two thousand, so.
If you want to match them up, it's a lieutenant, police department.
And I want to just ask the question of, uh, the, uh, cost effectiveness of sending a, a big fire truck to a heart attack victim as opposed to a, a smaller vehicle that doesn't?
And that's where we went with the, the single role paramedics that we have, the, the two, four explorers that are out throughout the city. Uh, we've got one down south, one out north. That's our initial starter plan for that, was to try to let, you know, limit engine traffic, truck traffic, keep them in the house as much as possible. We are trying to work on that and fixing that where we get, you know, we have, they can go to more places by themselves first and then leave. But currently, we do pull on engines and truck companies, you know, like say if our medic unit down south is coming up midtown. You know, midtown gets the call plus the down-south truck, so that truck's having to come up here as well. This engine company is running on a call while we're waiting on the, the smaller unit to come. But now down south in itself, they typically handle that area themselves in the smaller truck and the engine stays in the house. So that's what we're trying to get to eventually, leave as many engines and truck companies in the house as we can.
Does it put any part of the city at risk when the fire truck is not at the fire station and it's on a?
No, uh, there, there's a lot of overlap built into it. So it's, since I've been there, that's a part of the planning process of the supervisors on duty. And that's why it's important that we have folks, uh, certified and trained to handle the various different kind of calls. Because it's, it's, it's not only medical calls, but you may need a heavy rescue team, you may need a hazardous material team. So that's all a part of the coordination at the beginning of the shift to make sure that every area of the city is covered.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you have any questions? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Planning, growth, development? Oh, I'm sorry, central dispatch, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, central dispatch.
I think that was very intentional.
That was not actually intentional, I looked down at that, I just.
He just wanted me to see that stand.
Yeah, I just want to see how, if you were paying attention, Stan.
I know she says that you're her son, so.
All right, central dispatch is on.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Page twenty.
That starts on nineteen.
Starts on nineteen? Bottom of nineteen, all right. Any questions for Lenonda?
Mine gets around the, the fifteen percent.
You don't have to really come up with a question if you don't have.
Well, it's a fifteen percent increase in salaries.
In salaries? Well, the fifteen percent increase in salaries would be from where I have asked for two more positions, but we have since cut one of the positions. So that's going to be one additional position, two dispatch.
The fifteen percent is just one?
Plus their step raises.
Plus what?
Plus their step raises, their current employee step raises too.
Okay.
Yes, because we've lost another one. I get them in and lose them. Can't handle the job.
And the other question is the fifty-seven percent increase on fuel? Now granted, it's not a lot of dollars.
Well, that, okay, so I have a city-issue vehicle. So there are cla, if there are classes or schools that, that I attend with the dispatchers, then I will drive my vehicle and they do not drive their personal vehicle. That saves on us paying money back to them for driving their personal vehicles. Uh, their only thing I can say is gas went up. Because I don't really travel any more than what I have done for the last ten years, fifteen years, other than taking them to a class this year. They had some training and I took them.
It was, I think, a seven hundred dollar.
That is if things were taken out of the right line item budget from out there.
But back to the salaries, what was the increase per person percentage on that? Was it the same or did it vary among people and how is that decided?
Actually, the dispatchers that I have, they are staggered on, on the step level that we did from the survey. So they start out at nineteen oh nine, so I will have some at that level and then the next level up, so it would vary.
So they get one step this year, basically?
Yes, sir, they only move up one step.
What would a step roughly be? Two and a half percent, okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Anything else for Lenonda?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning, growth and development, planning is right underneath central dispatch.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So with Stan, you can ask planning, you can ask housing and building codes questions and, uh, engineering.
I will preface ours by just saying that planning, engineering and building are all the development services. So a lot of our expenses, uh, rise and fall based on the level of development. Uh, so we try to shoot, um, toward an estimate of what we think that the development activity is going to be. And then if, if we don't, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it. I mean, that's, that's the way we budget, uh, but we have to, we have to have the money there. Uh, because if we have more zonings, then we have to run more, more public notices, so we, our expense goes up. So we try to shoot in the middle and, uh, but again, if we, if we don't reach that mark, then we don't spend it.
Yeah, planning is on twenty underneath there, then building and housing goes to twenty-one, engineering's on twenty-five.
And Stan, you had to spend point two-five percent more in planning and zoning.
Point two-five. Yeah, that's, uh, and, and most of the, again, a lot of that is, is us trying to estimate the, the level of activity. So, um, you know, we, our, our, you know, our expenses are pretty, pretty standard. They don't, you know, they're, they're copier expense. We, we lease a copier. So we have a certain set amount that comes out or we, or we have publicity induced, that's, that's set by the, the newspaper or whatever we have to run into the notices. So, you know, our, our expenses are kind of fixed. Now, the, the reimbursable planning that's under that, that's our MPO, uh, money. That's our state money that we get for doing transportation planning. Um, it shows an increase in there, but it's really not, because, um, that money is eighty-five percent reimbursable by the state. But we have to, we have to have an expense side, uh, so that we can, and we also have a revenue side. So, so any mon, any hours that we spend on, on, uh, transportation planning, that gets reimbursed to us in an eighty-five, fifteen split. But again, remember that the city pays us to do a job regardless. So, so that's money that comes back to the city, uh, for set for, you know, hours that I spend on transportation planning. And that, and that varies per quarter. It's, it's billed every quarter to the state. And that, that varies, it just depends on how many hours we've spent on that. We can't just say we spent hundreds of hours and then just give us the money. We, we have to log those hours and keep track of them, so. But again, I just wanted you all to know that that is, that, that shows a forty-three percent, but that's not really a forty-three percent. This is the same level we had last year. It's just if we don't have the hours to expense against that, then, then it shows us being under that, so. Ours is hard to, to annualize, because we have software expenses that come out at the end of the year, uh, that we have to pay. And so a lot of our annualized numbers that you see here are hard to annualize, because they're, they're based on whatever amount, level of activity we have.
There's another A here too, in building, you had four point nine percent total loads.
Yes.
But would you comment a little bit on the salaries? Eight percent, is that one person, ten people?
Um, that is, we, right now, we have, uh, two open positions that we're, that we're going to fill. Um, those are existing positions. That's just to get us back to the level, uh, that we were. So that, that's not, um, any of that increase is just based in, um, uh, where they are, uh, in that, in that pay rate scale. But, but Greg's here, if you ha, if you want him to address it specifically. But again, um, we're not asking for, uh, any new people. Uh, we had a, we had a vacant position, uh, that we did, that, that we had for about half this year. So that's why when, when you're annualizing, if you didn't have anybody in the position for half a year, then when you analyze it, it looks like you're. So that's why when, when you're annualizing, if you didn't have anybody in the position for half a year, then when you analyze it, it looks like you're, you know, you're, you're, you're going way over. But that position has been removed from our budget, so, so we're not, we're not filling that. Uh, so I, I feel like that we've, we've, we've done the things, uh, and I tell people, you know, and I know many people say this, but I, I truly believe we, we spend the city's money like we'd spend our own. We, we don't, we, we spend what we have to spend, but we don't spend the things that we don't need to spend. So, uh, I feel like we pretty much are economic with our, are economical with our money. And, and I will say from a, from a process standpoint, uh, you know, the planning, growth and development that we started back in twenty-three. Uh, we're, we're reaping the benefits of that and we're receiving a lot of, uh, comments from our development community that things are working a whole lot more efficiently. Um, that the pro- some of the problems they were having have been fixed because one of the things it allows, uh, us to do now that we're all under one umbrella is we can look at the development process from start to finish. And if there's any deficiencies in that, then I can make those changes in whatever department we need to make those in so that we can, you know, we can adjust that. And it makes us more fluid, we can move more quickly and, and we listen to our development community. If, if they have, uh, realistic, uh, complaints, you know, we, we, we hear them and we try to make adjustments where we can.
It's no money, but demolitions are projected to be way high. Are we reaching a saturation point or where are we there?
Well, we've got some, some demolitions that, that are gonna be coming up that are probably more expensive in terms of what those, you know, what that's gonna be.
As you look at the vacant property review commission, if they, you know, deem a property as vacant, has a structure on it, we can get rid of that structure and sell it. Any other questions for Stan or Greg, uh, for engineering, building, housing codes, planning?
Thank you.
We appreciate you, Mr. Pilot, very much.
Yep, public works, that'll include.
Mayor. Mayor.
Please.
Mayor?
Please.
I would like to redirect your question, Councilman McLean, on the gas, cause I was thinking seven hundred dollars. I have three generators, the north, the south, and the central dispatch, cause I was thinking I don't spend that much gas. And we use those once a week on a test mode and they're filled up with diesel and they just filled them up this year too, cause we used them so much. Just wanted to make sure I threw that out there.
Thank you.
Alright, public works, that starts on twenty-one, that's health and sanitation, that's stormwater, street.
Signs, signals.
Signs, signals, huh?
Is that all?
That's all.
That's all he has.
By the way, thank you again for Campbell Lake, the second time is charm, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Yeah, just comment on the public works section of the budget. The fifty-seven percent increase is moving one person from engineering over to public works, uh, so that they can answer the phone and take, and help Austin out. He can't do it all by himself.
What page is that?
Uh, it's twenty-one, it's public works. And then, uh, stormwater management starts on twenty-two. And just kinda, street admins twenty-three in street. Garage operations is twenty-four. Traffic signalization, signs is twenty-five, so. And stormwater operations is twenty-six.
You addressing streets too?
Yes.
Are you that good or are these numbers not right?
Say again?
I said, are you that good or are these numbers not right?
Uh, that's the department ads, they did a great job.
I do have a que- a question about the garage operations, do you have that one? Okay, uh, it's, yeah, I know you, the, uh, salaries are up thirty percent, twenty-nine percent.
I left Phillip.
Yeah, we've been understaffed. Yeah, they've been understaffed.
Good afternoon.
Hello there.
Actually, I don't know what figure y'all have. Well, actually, it's worse than that. I'm actually proposing four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and three dollars and twenty-eight cents. We have, since twenty-twenty, we have been working about five to six people. And in twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, we had eleven. So we've been working extremely short help. The good news is, is we have hired two, we now have eight. And we have one more that supposedly has been hired, so we'll have a total of nine. But since the numbers that I gave Bobby, I met with the fire department. And, uh, they have got a previous employee that wants to work, uh, one day a week. And they did change one of their employees to be kind of the fleet director for the fire department, kinda like Jackie Benton is with the police department. So we work hand in hand with, uh, this person and schedule. But right now, we only have one fire, uh, technician and he stays extremely busy. And we have not been, because of the low employee rate that we have, we've not been proactive on doing a lot of the PMs that needed to be done. But now, with eight, we're so much better than we were with six, but we really still need this other person. Uh, I think that we can be very proactive and get these vehicles in. And the key to anything to reduce costs is to maintain that piece of equipment and take care of it. Uh, the taxpayers deserve that, but, uh, you can't do that without employees. And, um, we also, um, when we repair a vehicle, uh, we're trying to protect that asset as well. But you, you gotta have the people to do it, but you've also got to pay these people because. I've, I've called about eighteen different garages, even as far away as Memphis and done an average. And the average heavy duty technician makes thirty to thirty-eight dollars an hour. And we're not paying that, that amount of money. So some of that increase is for, uh, raises for these employees because I'm afraid we could lose one or two and we can't really afford to lose them. But, uh, don't say that it is what it is, but I mean, I'm like Stan Pilot, I, I try to spend every dollar just like it was my own dollar, cause it is basically my dollar. But it's, we've been understaffed for a long time, so I really think when you go back and look at those budgets. Uh, in twenty nineteen, we were five hundred and, uh. I've got it here somewhere, it was, uh. I think it's five hundred and nine thousand dollars in salaries. And so I think we're still gonna be about seven or eight percent under what we were in twenty-nineteen even, but if you approve this, this increase.
And, but that's one person?
It was.
What, that's the increase of one person, remind me?
Well, and then, oh, well, I didn't explain. I met with Chief Riddle and Scotty McClure and this person that they're wanting to hire, he used to work for the city of Jet and Garage. I, not since I've been there, but he's supposedly well versed in the fire department. Well, what they're wanting to do is do some of the little basic maintenance things, greasing the ladders and, uh, some of the chainsaws and stuff like that. But they would take care of that, so then when that fire truck comes to us, we just have to do the major thing like what we call a PMC. And, uh, that's gonna reduce our workload. So I really think if you agree to this, which that's eleven thousand, uh, five hundred dollars a year, I think is what the total amount, what they wanna do is one day of twenty-eight dollars an hour for eight, eight hours for, uh, a week's time. But he's retired, he can only make a certain amount of money. But they feel very confident, uh, that he is top notch and would do the same, you know, quality work that would be done if it was down at the garage. But a lot of people don't realize, if we had to outsource the stuff that we do, we're charging like twenty dollars and fifty cents an hour on labor and the parts are sold at cost. And like I said, it's two hundred dollars plus an hour if you carry it to a truck repair shop. And about a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for a just light truck or passenger car, if you carried it to a repair shop or a dealership. So it, it's saving the taxpayers quite a bit of money. So we really need to do as much as we can do and not outsource some of the stuff that we've been outsourcing. That's what some of them would have to do because we just didn't have employees and you can only get so much a year. I mean, so much of that, you know, done, so. That's where the salary increase. I think everything else, um, I'm counting where kinda like Stan was, Pilot said, I try to pick on some of these things a little bit high, but the inflation rate is more than three, three percent. I mean, we, some of these parts are coming in that we were paying eighty dollars, I mean, three months ago and they gone up to a hundred and forty-nine dollars, you know, in just a short period of time. So some of these numbers I ran a little bit higher than, I think we'll be under budget on anything, but salaries, I don't, I really think that's a really close number, what we really need.
Help me, uh, in here regarding, um, public works, the street department. Where is it the line item regarding the, uh, cost that would be associated with fixing potholes and things of that nature that come up?
Rick, we got anything else for Phillip?
I don't.
For garage? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phillip.
I'm on page twenty-three, so any member of the council can help me out on that if you know where it is. But for expenses like potholes come up or road repairs and things of that nature that need to be done quickly, where is that line item?
What about on page twenty-four, repair and maintenance? Would that be equipment or?
It should be operating supplies, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for operating supplies and, and street maintenance on page twenty-three.
That's a new piece of.
Wait, wait, where on twenty-three?
Uh, it's gonna be in, uh, it's.
SSA street maintenance?
Yes, sir.
And it's under which I, line item?
Operating supplies.
I still don't see it, operating what?
Supplies.
Okay. A hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Now for, like in my district, Lexington Street, the street department came up and repaired that, it's in bad shape. Hayes Avenue needs to be repaved and, uh, Lincoln Street is, is in kinda bad shape. This one sixty, and, and think about potholes and things from the winter time come, is that a real, is that a realistic figure or does that figure need to go up? And I know we're trying to keep everything down, I understand that. But in order for it to, you know, be adequately done, because I look at, you know, people don't wanna go places in Jackson and get the cars torn up while they're going to the place they need to get to. And so that, I just wanna just be straightforward with me on that. Is one sixty enough to take care of potholes and needed maintenance that might be needed over the course of a fiscal year? And if not, how much should it be?
Well, you're welcome to put sixteen million in that line item if you'd like, but, uh, I think we could, we, we can make an impact with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
You can.
We can make an impact.
You, we repairing potholes, uh, pothole repair, when you buy the asphalt, how much is a ton of asphalt, Dana?
Just seventy-eight a ton.
Seventy-eight a ton, so you can imagine how many potholes you can fit, repair with a ton of hot mix that you put in a hole, uh, you can repair a lot of potholes with that.
And Councilman, that like on, on, uh, Lexington, we have the equipment that goes down and does the milling so they can repair it. And so it's, it's our equipment that we.
And they did do that.
You're not paying for equipment, you're paying for asphalt, so that's seventy-some dollars a ton.
And that's in this one sixty?
Equipment, we already got, so you're really not spending nothing but the asphalt money and then we repair it.
Now, the piece of equipment around eighty thousand dollars, that's not in here, that's already been.
Yeah. You're paying for the materials.
The, you have the equipment, the milling equipment that we.
Alright, so we're masking again now, the one sixty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You're telling me that that, I know you want sixteen million, I understand that. And we all know you can't get sixteen million, alright? But for the next fiscal year, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars will be impactful to whether citizens can see something's being done.
Well, you, if you look at what we, uh, projected to spend is a hundred and fifty-four thousand, then I have to run out of money, then I go to contractual service money and get it out of that money, which I put a little bit more money now, cause we have other things coming up. But I think that'd be a sizable amount of money to take care of asphalt, cause we already got the, the equipment to work with.
Okay.
Uh, you know, we never know what's gonna come up in the winter, so that's why you see contractual services. I move a lot of stuff that wasn't in the budget, that we wasn't using to make the numbers meet up. If we weren't using this money, I moved it to other line items to move that line item up a little bit, so we can use it in net line. So let's say we run out of money there, we can go to another line item and buy asphalt too.
Okay, so contracted services and operating supplies would be, uh, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars when you combine them?
Uh, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Alright, I'm, I'm.
We're gonna buy guardrails out of there too, so it's a lot of things you can buy out of contractual services and asphalt is one of them.
Okay, now I'm looking at one ten you're proposing for contractual services and one sixty for operating supplies, which would be the two seventy.
The proposal is one seventy-five.
Okay, well, that's not on what I'm looking at, y'all, y'all got that?
Yeah, it, it was the original request.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right, one, one ten plus one sixty.
Alright, so you requested one, one seven, seventy something and it's been cut down to one.
Okay, I see what you're talking about now, yeah.
Okay, so you had asked for one seventy, but it's cut down to one ten, is that right? For contractual service?
That's right.
Alright.
Well, I sent a note because we, uh, have a guardrail project coming up that we had to replace a lot of guardrails, so I.
Okay, so the, from the one seventy to one ten is sixty thousand dollars decrease, uh, that we see now. So with that sixty thousand dollar decrease, is it still enough in here to be impactful? Since you would ask for more of that at, at first? And if you need more than the one ten is in here, uh, just tell me now, that you need it.
Now, your guardrails, your guardrails, we, I just had a quote, um, we got twelve guardrails that's damaged that needs to be repaired and some need to be replaced. And that cost alone by itself is about forty, forty thousand dollars to get repaired. And that's why he, I had a person to put that in, put that number in.
Alright.
And contract service.
Okay, I just wanna just be clear that you've got enough, cause see, I'm gonna make a motion to give you all what you need.
Yeah, we.
Now, the council might cut, might say no to it, but I'm gonna make the motion because I think people need, roads are important and people need, they don't wanna tear their cars up. And, uh, there are a lot of places, not a lot, but there are some places in my district where it needs to be done. So, uh, if you need it, tell me, I'm gonna make the motion. And like I said, you got, you got nine people on the council, they can vote, vote it down, but I just need to know. And I don't wanna get you in trouble with your boss or anything like that at all either, by him being in here, but, uh, but I just need to know.
I didn't get the one ten, oh man, I sent the proposal in, so I didn't get that one ten back, so I thought we did one seventy-five.
Alright, and you would still stay with one seventy-five?
Yeah.
Alright, okay.
I mean, I had to get the one ten back, the one seventy-five was what I proposed.
Alright, I got you, I got you.
I see where you're coming from now.
They wanna get you one seventy-five, that's what you want?
Always.
He wants one seventy-five, Richard.
Yeah, I'm gonna make the motion, y'all can cut it down, but I'm gonna make the motion.
I'm gonna be there with you.
Yeah, I mean, closed mouth gonna get fed, dude.
That's right. Thank you.
Austin, I'll raise another question that may not deal with our budget. The streets in downtown Jackson on Highland Avenue, you know, you kind of change lanes to avoid the kinda repaired pot. Any, is that us, is that the city or is that the state?
It is now.
Say again?
Middle of next month, we've got a plan to make repairs to Highland, um, down south, all the way up north. We've already identified fifty-one locations where we're gonna be doing some milling and.
Oh, wow.
Some pothole repair, but instead of just going in and filling potholes, we're gonna do a lot of milling. Gonna coordinate with T-Dot, uh, to make sure.
We get reimbursed from T-Dot, we had to amend the contracts, that'll be coming for you all.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, we amended that al- we amended that already, so.
Say again?
We, they already voted on that, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So it allows us to go in and make the repairs instead of just filling the holes.
Well, I'm, I'm with everyone else. One of the things that, that our citizens see are streets. And, and the thing that we hear a lot about is that, uh, we need to be repairing potholes. And we, uh, thank you, Mayor, for doing a whole lot of that repair and intersections, but we still hear it. So we need to kind of. So we need to kind of get that off the plate of the things that we have to deal with. So that's one of the things that I think most council members will want to make sure is in there. And especially, Richard.
Yeah, that's right, you said it right.
Mr. Clark, I know this addresses all of it and it's already been talked about, but, um, I want money for roads and not just fix the potholes. And I think that that's probably at the top of my list, that I'm gonna require that somehow we come up with a plan to be able to pay for this. I think we, we have to, um, so however we go about doing that, suggestions, um, I think Mr. Arnold is one of our experts. If we dip into this, if we, but we must put that at the top of our list. We hear that, I hear it, um, if not daily, several times a day. And it's something that I'm gonna require has to be done, or I don't, I'm just not gonna be able to do my job and somebody can sit here in a couple of years.
And it also, uh, people love their city based on the condition of their roads. You know, they get frustrated with us and with the city and the mayor is when their streets are not in good repair.
People get frustrated with me?
Yeah, but.
We would, we would never get frustrated with you. But then you have the, some conditions like out north where there needs to be some infrastructure.
Stormwater issue?
And, you know, that's not something, if we're building two hundred homes?
Well, we'll let Stan talk, but we are gonna be hopefully having some. I, I think just to be blunt, we've all talked around it, I said it this morning, we've got to address our infrastructure, period. We know we have a stormwater issue, I think this study is a great first step, I think when the mayor said that, let's see what the study is. But I'm very passionate, again, we need a three-year, five-year, ten-year plan, how are we gonna get there? This is astronomical amount of money that we're gonna have to spend. You can't pretend or, or wish away what is under our roads and what happens every day during, when we have storms and the impact that the water makes. So you all are the experts, so we're gonna count on you all to tell us and probably have to develop a plan so we can make smart decisions, but we have to get there.
Our stormwater assessment project will make those, will, will give us a plan moving forward, uh, once it's completed, which will be the end of, not this next year, but the year after.
But then we need to be planning how we're gonna pay for that.
Exactly.
We have charge of repairing potholes, the paving part would be an engineering part, uh, stuff come up, we get a call, we just about there, the same day we prepared it.
Yeah, it's been good and I appreciate that very much.
I, I might offer just a couple of comments. So the city unfortunately has suffered a number of years from deferred maintenance of the city, basically. And, uh, we have, the city has made progress, we started down that road of making progress the last three or four years or so, we've been fortunate enough to spend some money. Now, when you start talking about, uh, stormwater, or that's, you know, that, that's gonna be millions of dollars. Uh, and you do need, we do, you're absolutely correct, Council Wallace, I mean, we, we do need to start identifying, uh, priorities. And, uh, begin understanding, uh, what, what it's gonna take financially and a timeline to, to, to fund that. I agree with you a hundred, a hun- hundred percent on that. The other thing I would say, some of the discussions the last few minutes, so, you know, uh, the budget is a long process, it's even a little bit longer this year, uh, than, than normal for different reasons. But, but somewhere around about June the sixth or so, um, n- n- numbers similar to the, to these, uh, begin to be circulated internally with the mayor's office and department head. That, that took place again on, somewhere around June the tenth and again on like June the fourteenth, and that's, that's part of the process, right? So what's happened over that period of time, um, um, you know, we, um, the department heads have had a chance to review these numbers and they have found, you know, like, um, Philip Evans' comments about the salaries. You know, that's just one example, there's a handful of others where, you know, before we get to the final, uh, version of, of the budget, uh, like Austin has, had told us, we need to move some money. It's not an increase, not a decrease, just moving money around in that, that particular case. Uh, I will tell you some of the, uh, uh, joint funding numbers that we received from the county. Had a little difficult time getting those for a period of time, uh, the ones we got, um, a couple of weeks ago, now that they've had their fir- first reading of the budget, uh, some of those numbers have moved a little bit. That we will need to correct that, you know, in the final version of the budget. So like Percy was, you know, expecting what, one seventy-five?
Right.
Well, you know, um, well, there have been some reductions made in order to reduce the deficit, that happens to be one of them. And if, if we desire to put that number back in there or more or less, whatever, uh, we, we need some direction on that, so that we can make, make those changes. So that, that's just kind of part of the process, so we'll make sure everyone understands that. You know, I've, I've, over the course of the day today, uh, the situation in the police department on professional services, where I looked at that today, and I know that was one question that was asked over the last couple of days. And that's just a situation where, um, you know, it's, it's the, it's the record system for the central record department at the police department. And, uh, the, the bill for that is, is paid in June, right? So our annualized number doesn't reflect the actual cost this year. So, you know, changes like that will need to be made before we get to the final, and we're, we're tracking these, and I don't want to suggest that there's, you know, dozens and dozens of them and it's a lot of money, but there are some, so.
So when you say that, as council, we need to see that sooner than later, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, uh, we've identified a couple of them today, uh, you know, there's, I, I'm aware of a couple of more that may, may, may come up. You're, you're talking about, you know, um, and, uh, let's see, you went from, you're probably, you're talking, you're talking about less than a hundred thousand dollars in total.
So that's.
Of the ones, of the ones that I know about, uh, so.
I really agree too, and I believe.
It's like any other budget decision, we don't have to make them, right? I mean, you have to make choices when you're, when you're doing a budget.
Well, we're, we're dealing with deferred maintenance, and so if we're looking at not funding things, we just say, okay, we're just not gonna fund things that we need to repair.
Well, the, the, I know, I know there's lots of, not to get us off track, there's lots of discussions and rightfully so about streets and infrastructure, but deferred maintenance goes way beyond streets. Uh, you know, and, and infrastructure, so that, that's a big project and study and planning and does need to take place, so.
If we had the funding to pave every street in town, they would still be falling in from the stormwater systems beneath and crumbling.
And their backyards and their side yards.
Right.
This brings a pressing, uh, a lot, and there's a large variance in stormwater operation salaries, and we're adding position or two in there. Four oh seven to five seventy-six, I think there's two positions.
Which is D.O.R., we have, uh.
Is that on page twenty-two? No, he's twenty-six.
Twenty-six, yeah. I think we've got a total of nine employees within that department maintaining the entire infrastructure of the city. We need, uh, need all the manpower we can get within that department.
It's like new people, I don't know, new people, okay.
All right, any other questions for Public Works? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All got easy back there.
Hey, Richard, you going, you going to step in that motion?
Yeah.
Y'all should have asked.
Thank you.
Very far you're gone.
Yeah, any questions on H and S?
Several million dollars.
Oh.
Did you say okay?
I think H and S is, we covered.
Oh, gosh, I think I might have to call the analyst here. That was a good phone call, so that makes up for it.
Oh, fourteen million dollars worth of phone call.
Any H and S questions? We're gonna move on to recreation and parks.
Well, let me, let me ask quick, on the street sweeper for key parts of our city, like the bypass, intersections, those are ongoing to where we're keeping those areas clean? Okay.
All right, recreation and parks has, it starts on twenty-six, it's recreation admin and programs, and you got athletics, then all the.
Westwood, civic center.
Civic Center, the head.
Fairgrounds, sportsplex, farmer's market.
There you go.
I have those people here if you have questions for that. Any questions regarding rec, just the recreation portion, administration part?
Why's it looking at me? Okay, what is the proposed, because I was looking at it earlier, what is that number?
The number for?
For the parks that we're gonna put in to implement.
You're talking about capital, right? We're, we're going through the operating right now.
Okay, just offer, all right, I'm gonna, excuse me, I'm just gonna leave in a little bit from my arm, so I'm just trying to get my questions in if I needed to.
Okay.
Great job.
Thank you.
That, on, on the salaries of thirteen percent, how many people or what, what is that increase?
Well, we not only have, we have five in administration that's in the office, but we also have in that budget, all of the summer camp workers for Westwood. And also the after-school staff during the school year come into that budget also. And they had slight increases from previous years.
You getting a bathroom, I'm just trying to help you out here because you're looking.
Well.
Needed a bathroom.
Let me say, I appreciate the, uh, mayor and the council, over the past five years, we've bought the recreation parks department, uh, with that addition of a park manager, uh, slash grant right and everything. We've got a lot of things that have should have been taking place over the years in terms of maintenance and deferred costs. And, uh, the department is growing, and so we've, we've done a lot of things and some more things are coming, so, uh.
Oh, the civic center.
Yeah, civic center.
Sorry, yeah, okay, we're, we're, are we losing about three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars a year? And do we see any way that that's gonna be improved?
The civic center is a, is a, is a, is an asset that I don't think will ever make money. We can do some things to defer some of the expense, now I've just.
Like this week alone, we got people from forty-nine other states zaneing hotels here that are.
Right.
I'm not making a judgment.
No, I understand.
Trying to get, trying to get facts, okay.
So we have now, you know, we, we, we're without a manager right now, so, um, we have looked at some things and I've saw some things since I've been dealing with it. That if we stay on top of, we can defer some of the costs, for example, uh, when you go twenty years not changing the oil in the, in the, in the, in the air conditioning unit system, then when it happens, it's gonna be a big cost. But I don't think any, any of the public buildings were designed to actually break, pretty much break even. These are amenities that offset, uh, the enhancement of qualitative life for the cities, the mayor just mentioned, uh, but all of the pageants that are there, uh, all of those things have bought in money in terms of hotels, restaurants.
And I know the ned, but it's losing about a half a million a year, I think, does that sound about reasonable?
No, it don't sound reasonable.
I think it really is about two twenty-five, expenses seven-ten, but.
That's, it's almost like looking at your streets, how, how do they pay for themselves, well.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't have these things, I'm just, I was surprised that the ned was that high, to be honest with you. You know, there are some things that we'd be doing, that, you know, and Dave is on vacation, but he's done great and he's increased the participation. I guarantee you, if you would tell people that there's no ned or no cultural arts center, uh, many, many industries and people that want to move here would say this city has nothing to offer. Uh, most of our facilities are designed to really be qualitative life issues and not profit centers.
And, and the Legend of Music, this is the first year that we've really had a big budget in that, what's the story on that one?
Two people for programs, so right now we got, we get the one off of.
Yeah.
A tour bus from Sweden coming in, uh, you know, and so there's, it's really underutilized and so it's a phenomenal building. Um, it's about, I'd say, not even half utilized, and so bringing people in to have programs, bringing local people in to actually utilize a building, uh, to expand the arts program downtown.
I don't have any answers on that.
Okay, thanks, Richard.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, I lost my page. Next up, groundskeeping. And I saw them a second ago, where they are. It's on one of these pages.
The groundskeeping?
Yeah, let's see it. Okay, so we're gonna be right here on page twenty-eight, expense column, the expense report. And R.C., I, I think just maybe give the council an overview of kind of what you've taken on since, what, December?
Uh, January eleventh, twelfth.
Yeah.
Um, so previously I was with the sportsplex, managing the athletics, the fields, maintenance, uh, and taking over groundskeeping, like I said, January. And what we've decided to do is combine sportsplex with as far as the grounds, with the groundskeeping to make one department, uh, to kind of simplify. And all I've done is basically moved what's coming from the sportsplex to the groundskeeping department, uh, and that's really it. Really not having added a whole lot of anything, just basically moved numbers around to make one department versus the two. These guys take care of every bit of the city property that you have, fire departments, police departments, every facility the city owns and then some, I promise you. So, uh, we are still, I think we're like twenty-nine as far as with the groundskeeping department, I think normally thirty-five is kind of where they want to be, but we're making do of what we have. And then by saying that, with the guys from the sportsplex that are coming over, um, I have requested for the five or six full-time to go from part-time to full. But everyone else is part-time seasonal from March, and most of them are really from May to August, because a lot of them are high school kids, so. Really twenty, twenty-one is what we use at the sportsplex as far as temp workers or seasonal people, and I have two full-time people right there now, so. And by bringing those six with the sportsplex to groundskeeping, they will still be utilized at both facilities, so.
Any questions for R.C.?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Do you got last two, got municipal maintenance. And I think our I T, yeah, look at that, but I think Brian had to, he had an appointment he had to get to, so he won't be back until after three. Uh, municipal maintenance is on page twenty-eight.
Thank you, sir. I think the question's gonna be just only the increase in salaries, eighteen, nineteen, or almost twenty percent.
We, we had, uh, some positions, pressure washing crew, uh.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Our, our new pressure washing equipment.
You had any good comments from people, are they noticing that?
We're getting a lot of good feedback on that, yeah, that's, yeah.
We're getting a lot of good feedback on that, yeah, that's, yeah.
Good.
All right, so any other questions from Kirk, for Kirk? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Thank you for what you're doing.
All right, so all the departments, um, Haley's back there, Haley wanna come up and talk about recovery court quickly, and the, uh, you know, the council voted a couple of months ago about mental health court, so you can talk about that, I don't know what page that is. There we go, page two, there we go.
Two?
Yeah.
I brought a couple copies for you all too, just maybe you helped, typed out a little bit about the program, we currently have the recovery court, and then the mental health court, that the contract start date is September the first. Hopefully that'll help clarify a couple of things, and then the budgets are attached, um, as well for each individual program.
Thank you.
Any questions for Haley regarding recovery court, new mental health court?
On recovery court, the, the increase of salaries of eighteen, three or four percent?
Yes, those are.
No, that's, that's city court, recovery court's gonna be a seventy-two percent increase, and that's for the mental health court.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Two new positions for the mental health court, we'll hire a clinical case manager, and then an admin assistant that will help with both programs.
It's interesting to sit in there and see the successes of recovery court.
Thank you.
Encouraging.
It's rewarding for sure, yeah.
Any other questions for Haley? All right, thank you.
So much, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you all so much.
Can't deliberate, can't make motions, or this is a work session.
I, I, I might have been out of the room, but did we talk about the ballpark at Jackson?
He was just right here.
We did.
No.
No, we gotta talk about it, no?
No.
I have a question about that, there's a sixty-three percent increase in salaries, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Well, thank you.
Uh, twenty-three-one.
They got a posi- they got a vacant position that didn't get filled right now, and so, the annualized piece, I know it's, it's open right now, they got, they got it published.
And the total cost is, uh, five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, I hate to be stupid, but what, what do we do out there, what does the city do?
Maintain the asset, which is, which is the stadium itself.
Okay, so the, the, the salaries were for how many people?
Three. And so, they're doing all the grounds on that from when you turn off of Ridge Chris, yeah.
They're doing, I thought, uh.
No, no, so they're doing the ballpark piece, Sportsplex is RC's.
RC's not doing the ballpark.
He's not doing the ballpark, no.
Wouldn't make sense to put him in ballpark with the equipment he has, anyway, that's side issue.
They got their, they got their own equipment out there.
Side issue, side issue. Uh, utilities, I guess, and sanitation, a hundred and seventy-three thousand, does that mean electricity for running the lights?
Electricity, and then, you know, after a game, they gotta clean and dump all the trash.
Those lights are bright, notice how nice the weather tonight driving back from the house. Okay, that was one of them.
About a nine hundred thousand dollar suspension what it used to be.
We'll turn them back up and then we'll turn them down again.
I'm gonna move from three nine hundred dollars to millions of dollars. They were under, uh, Sportsplex and ballpark were under recreation and parks. So, Jason's here, if you got a Sportsplex question?
Jason, what's the increase of games we've had, or teams, or, I remember sitting in on a meeting.
Sportsplex is gonna start on page thirty-three, bottom of thirty-three.
Go with it, thanks for your question.
Uh, so, Councilman McMain, the, uh, your question is related to the number of teams, number of games. So, two years ago, our total teams that we hosted at the Sportsplex was nine hundred and thirty-five, last FY was five hundred, or fifteen hundred and sixteen. This year, we're gonna finish right at eighteen hundred and sixty, so, when we host more teams, we have more games, we're playing on more fields, uh, the number of games just goes up exponentially, um, so, all of the expenses then go up along with that. But revenue goes up along with that as well, and not just the direct revenue that we're getting, that's anticipated right at one point four or five million dollars for this FY, and budgeted just under one point five million for next year, uh, again, it's a moving target, I mean, we've gone from nine hundred and thirty-five teams to eighteen hundred and fifty teams in two years. Uh, it wouldn't be prudent for me to sit here and say, we're gonna continue to grow at a thirty percent clip every year, uh, I hope we do, uh, but, you know, kinda basing on the current year that we're in, um, you know, so, the revenue's gone up, the direct revenue's gone up, but then the indirect revenue for the community, and not just the economic impact, uh, but if we have an economic impact of eight to ten million dollars on the community a year, the sales tax and the hotel motel tax that is coming directly back to the city on that is, is another five to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's coming back.
And so, the increase that you've had?
Almost a hundred percent in two years.
Okay.
So, a- and with that, you know, a- again, we're playing in every complex, on every field, um, at least two times a week, I mean, or Saturday and Sunday, barring weather. Um, and, and that's why that's kind of a, a moving target, and that's where I work with, uh, with Bobby and, and our accounting staff, because again, it's one of those things, you cannot annualize our numbers in any form or fashion, um, salary lines, everything else, you know, especially with the move now going from, in the admin salary lines, that included the grounds, that is going now to groundskeeping, so I only have three ti- three full-time employees in that, everybody else is seasonal, part-time. So, you know, I try to dial those numbers in, and I work with Bobby on dialing those numbers in as close as I can by literally going payroll by payroll, trying to see what those numbers are, and what they're going to be to finish, and what I'm gonna need in the next year. Um, you know, same thing, trying to, you know, concessions, operations that we're running, uh, you know, trying to work on the per caps and figure out exactly what we're gonna need, food costs are going up, but also trying to provide that as an amenity, and, and not price those items so far out of whack that, that we're causing our, our, our teams and our, that, that we're hosting to have a bad experience. Uh, so, we try for those operations to run it, to, to, to make some money so that we can offset some of the other costs, uh, to run the facility. Um, but our, just alone this year, the eighteen hundred and fifty teams that, uh, that we're gonna bring in, the, the attendance that we're gonna end up with, uh, at the Sportsplex is gonna be right at eighty thousand people through our gates in a year. And again, two years ago, uh, we were at forty-four thousand.
And they pay?
They pay a gate fee to come in.
Those eighty thousand people pay?
Yes, sir.
Per day?
Per day, that doesn't include the children that are underage that are getting in free, and the, you know, that is actually a paid attendance, and that also does not include the kids that are playing, or the coaches that get in. So, once you factor everyone in, it's well over a hundred thousand people that have come through our gates in a year.
But the important thing for a budget is that eighty thousand people come to our city to pay to walk in.
Well, some of those are local, but out of that, you probably, the numbers that I have is somewhere around thirty to thirty-five percent of those are local, and the other side are from with an hour or more away, including representing up to eight states. Uh, but the other important part about the local kids and the local teams that are playing, is if they're playing with us, they are not leaving Jackson on a weekend to go somewhere else to play and spending their money somewhere else.
And with eighteen hundred games?
Eighteen hundred teams.
Teams.
Which, I mean, we're, you know, each team is guaranteed to play three, when they, when a team signs up, it's a three-game guarantee. They're playing anywhere from three to six games on a weekend.
And.
And for each game, there's umpire cost, there's, that associated with that, there, there, you know, the, the costs that are all associated with each one of those games, uh, how long the lights have to be run, how much trash has gotta be picked up, um, how long our gates have to stay open, how long concession stands have to stay open. But again, there's a direct revenue that's coming in on a lot of those items, i- i- if not directly, indirectly, that's completely tied to every one of those.
And so, you're looking at this year, how much in, in gross revenue?
Uh, direct revenue to the city of Jackson for the Sportsplex this year will be right at, uh, one point four or five million.
Now, which is excellent, and, and, uh, you don't take too much credit, but you did an excellent job when you revamped how you had t- teams come in without paying fees, like tenants went wild, so thank you for that, but this, I know that, uh, the economic impact is the most important number, but do you project breaking even out there someday, or is it something you'll never quite break even?
I think it, it'd be tough, I mean, the, as the, the ways to do that would cut down, volume cures everything. View, volume cures everything on the economic impact side, and again, the, the economic impact is one thing, but the indirect revenue that is coming back to the city in sales tax and hotel motel tax, then we are breaking even.
Yeah, yeah, oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we absolutely, just, and, and that doesn't include everything, that's just the sales tax piece and the hotel motel tax that we are generating right now. And I don't know that a few years ago that that was the case, but now, when you look at that, um, I, I think total expenses budgeted between all of those areas right there is right at one point nine million dollars, so there, there is a gap of about four hundred thousand dollars that is the investment into the, but the return on that investment, I, I would think would be made ten out of ten times on what that generates.
Hotel motel or?
It'd ca- carry it by itself, uh, so if you talk about just those revenues, and that doesn't talk about that economic impact for all of our businesses in town on how much money they're making, and that's where the Sportsplex, I mean, to me, that's, that's why we're there, is to get people here to spend money with our businesses.
When you gonna build that water park you've been telling me what?
He's got a shovel out there, aren't he?
I, hey, trust me, I, I would be ready to cut that ribbon tomorrow.
It's a block over. Thank you.
Any other questions from Jason? All right.
And the goal is two thousand?
I'm not gonna set a goal, I, I set a goal a couple of years ago with Councilman Taylor, and said I'd like to be around, uh, fourteen, fifteen hundred, and, you know, so, let's, let's keep pushing until we can't push anymore.
They're walking away.
Yeah.
No, you're fine, you're fine, I know you're leaving, all right, so it's, just those boys, all the questions asked, uh, went through all the recommendations, and it looks like we're increasing the overall budget by seventy-nine thousand dollars, so, um. But we'll meet, uh, we'll meet Monday night, and, um, can't make any motions today, obviously, for, gonna have a forum for one, and, uh, and a work session, so, Monday night we'll meet, and.
We got Richard's paving in there.
Could we take a break and come back for another hour?
Yeah, you come back. This is, we'll see everybody Monday.
Lay it on the bench, you're here.